To silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Aye.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order this September 17, 2025. It's a little after 10:00 a.m. All three commissioners are here and we'll start with our county administrator, Renetta McClure with consent and approval. Morning, Renetta.
Morning. You have seventeen exonerations to approve, 5,317 minutes for September 10, 2025. Vouchers, General County, 132,4256, 911, 39,398, Chestnut Ridge Park, 7,50344, Camp Muffley, 3,0053123, Mason Dixon Park, 64112, Mon County Center, 5,17612, Transportation Levy, 697,93328, Library Levy, 171,30993, EMS Levy, 1,509,4998, Reallocated Coal, 43,98144, Opioid Settlement Funds, 52,55405, Assessor's Valuation, 5,51519, Morgantown Industrial, TIF, 204,72212, ARPA, 35,31262, Parks and Rec, 38,4744, Purchasing Card, General County, 36,24748, Magistrate Court, 1812, Chestnut Ridge Park, 7648, Camp Muffley, 24281, Mason Dixon Park, 7648, Mon County Center, 38718, Assessor's Vow, 1,096625 for a voucher total of $2,986,01630. We have budget revisions that require state approval for the general fund, for the prosecuting attorney, insurance programs, state grants, law enforcement, home confinement, dams and dredging, social services and community development capital projects. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the county website and fiduciary orders for September 17, 2025.
Move to approve the consent and agenda items as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have fiduciary orders. Were there any other fiduciary items other than the hearing for the administrative closure?
No, there's just the administrative closure.
Okay. So at this time, we're going to hold a hearing on the order to administratively close estates that have reached a certain time period of inactivity. So when I open the hearing, anyone that has an objection to the estate that's on the list can come forward, state your name, the name of the estate, and what the objection is, and then we'll take it up from there. Missing anything there? All right, all right. So now we'll open the hearing on the fiduciary administrative closure list. So anyone wanting to come forward, if you have an objection to your estate being closed, please come forward, state your name, the name of the estate, and the reason why we should consider removing it.
Tim Buzo, Shirley Buzo's estate.
Okay, sir.
And a lot of unsolved issues.
Okay. As I recall, this one, there was a fiduciary hearing that was supposed to occur. Matt Gata's office was involved at some point. Is that, the hearing not occurred yet, or?
Yeah.
Okay, it still has not?
No.
Okay. So the issues that were present the last time we were here are still present?
Right.
Okay. Has there been any progress on any part of the estate at all, working forward, moving forward? Are you still kind of in a standstill?
Still in a sort of a standstill.
Okay.
King, sir, what was the full name of the estate?
Shirley Buzo.
Shirley Buzo.
Shirley, okay. Thank you.
It's the second, yeah. I see it's the second one on our list with notes. I'm reading the notes again. I apologize.
Okay. Well, thank you. Anyone else come forward, sir?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is for Rhonda Reed.
What's your name, sir? I'm sorry.
Michael Lyons.
Michael Lyons.
This is her brother I'm going to talk to.
Brother James Reed.
Yeah.
James Reed, okay.
Okay, when Rhonda passed away, the administrator was his, her mom, Wanda Reed. Then she passed away, okay? We got a letter saying that there's a lien on a vehicle for $12,000 some odd dollars.
$14,000.
Oh, $14,000, okay.
Okay.
Through the Fifth and Third Bank, okay? Now, the loan was paid off, okay? We have the title of the vehicle here.
Okay.
That's clear, all right? We do not know where Wanda put the paperwork for that, but the release. Fifth and Third will not give us a release because we're not the administrator.
Of Rhonda's estate.
Right. And that was the only thing there, okay? But we wouldn't have a clear title for it if it wasn't paid off.
As the, as Fifth Third made a claim against the estate?
No.
No.
Not that, no. We got a letter from the commission saying, hey, it's still on the books.
We have Taylor here from the clerk's office. What, were you?
They did place a claim.
So Fifth Third has filed a claim? All right. So going forward, the recommendation would be to object to the claim and then take that up with Fifth Third in a more formal setting, but it certainly seems like there's time needed in order to take care of that, so.
Well, see, here's another problem we have, okay? He wouldn't got a bond yesterday for the price that, that's on the paperwork that you sent, okay?
Sure.
They don't, won't accept that bond because it's not high enough. They want $28,000.
Who is, who is "they"? The creditor or the clerk?
Downstairs.
Yeah, well.
Perpet.
Whatever the requirement of the clerk is for the bond amount would be what the bond amount is. There's not a lot of wiggle room there. It's.
Okay. But see, if he's not appointed as administrator, Fifth and Third will not give us the paperwork.
Okay.
So he's got to be the administrator to get the paperwork.
Well, it would seem to me that in order to progress that estate along, to be able to complete the other estate, you'd need to meet the bond requirements that a clerk has set. That's their purview and their requirements. We don't have a lot of say over it.
Okay, so we just need to get a bigger bond, get him appointed, get Fifth and Third paperwork and close it.
Yeah, whatever recommendation.
Like a first step process.
Whatever requirements the clerk has for you to fulfill those duties to get that done, that's what you'll need to do. But it certainly would seem that.
Yeah, and just to be clear here, our job here isn't to tell you how to close the estate. Our job in this action is to whether to pull it from the administrative closure list or not. So that's really, going forward, that's really all the decision we're making.
Right, right.
Whether to pull it or not.
Understood, okay.
We're just trying to do everything right.
Just needs some more time to get it done, it sounds like.
Yes.
Okay, very well. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate the input.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Note that, you have the name of that one?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Buzo, we have that one. Anyone else?
Someone else can.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Robert Nar. I'm the executor of the will for Ruth Joanne E. Cummings.
Cummings, okay.
Yes. I still need to put her name on her gravestone. And I submitted the proper paperwork to get my mom's name taken off of my brother's life insurance, who's the beneficiary to my brother. And also some, I did that for my sister as well, so that they could do that because the life insurance and the stock people suggested that they do it rather than I do it. And so I wanted to let you know.
Are you asking for time, are you asking us not to administratively close the estate, or you're just telling us what's?
I'm just giving you input as to where it's at. I'd like to close it.
Oh, you don't have a desire to keep it open, okay.
Right. But I'm letting you know.
Wonderful, thank you.
In case I need to reopen it.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else? There will be one more. Excuse me, I'm going to take myself off the commissioner's stand. And my other job, I'm an attorney and I'm administering the state, so.
Your name, please.
Jeff Arnett for the estate of William Tennant. This is the second time we've come up an administrative closure. The estate's in litigation. The heirs are still fighting it out. No progress there. There is a status hearing on September 23rd. Until there's a decision made on who gets what, there's not a lot we can do, so.
So you want it to remain?
I would ask, I'd ask that it be kept open.
Okay. William Tennant?
William Tennant, yes, thank you.
Is there anyone else since?
Absolutely not.
Anyone else?
Okay.
So I would move the county clerk's office proceed with the administrative closing of the listing of estates as presented, with the exception of the Shirley J. Buzo estate, the Rhonda Lou Reed estate, and the William Tennant estate.
Second.
We have a first and a second. I will abstain from the vote on all of it as I'm a party on another hat, so it's been called for vote, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, no other fiduciaries? We already established that.
No, that was all.
Great. Introduction of new employees, personnel changes. We have the sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm in for the sheriff today.
Great. Just state your name for the record. I'm sorry. We know who you are, but.
Tammy White.
Thank you.
We have hired Anthony Carmen for the position of deputy sheriff. It is a full-time with benefits position that was advertised. His wages will be $4,691.67 monthly and $56,328 yearly.
Real quick, one point of order. I forgot to close the administrative hearing for the, so close the administrative closure hearing and then we have an introduction to new employee, Anthony Carmen. Do I have a motion on the?
I move to approve the personnel as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome.
Where are you from, Anthony?
Marshall County.
Okay, well, welcome, welcome.
Great.
Do you go by Tony or Anthony?
Anthony.
Okay. Welcome to Mon County.
Be safe and take care of us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Youth Services Center. Emmanuel Tolliver, youth crisis worker, transferred to full-time.
Yeah, he's been working for us part-time and he's transferring to full-time. Start, it's official start date is October 1st to be full-time.
Great.
Move to approve the personnel as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have our comments from the public session. Anyone has anything to say, please come forward, state your name and address, and state your piece. And so we'll open comments from the public. Seeing no one, we will close comments from the public. Next, we have a proclamation. It's Constitution Week, so please come forward and you may read your proclamation, or state your name, of course, and then you may read your proclamation.
I'm Dr. Joan R. Gibson, Regent of Woodburn Chapter, representing the three chapters in Montague County.
Who do you have with you here, Joan?
I have Becky Davis, who is Regent of Kurtzackel Morgan Chapter, and Brenda Fisher, who is Regent of Elizabeth Ledigditt Haggis hyphen Colonel John Evans Chapter.
Now, these are chapters of the Dodge and the American Revolution, is that correct?
Right, in Montague County.
Great, thank you. Please proceed with your proclamation.
Proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law and whereas September 17, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. Whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore we, the members of the Montague County Commission, by the virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, adopted the 17th day of September, 2025.
I move to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
If you could bring the proclamation forward, we'll sign it. Or it's already signed.
Yeah, it's already signed.
Did you want a photograph, or?
Yes.
I also want to thank you because being from Philadelphia, it's a very important event there. So you're continually this. I'm very excited to ring the bell and be here. So I can't be in Philly, but this is something I, very important to us.
It was four o'clock on the afternoon of the 17th when they stepped out of Constitution Hall to, and addressed the crowd and said, ladies and gentlemen, we have a constitution. That's why we ring the bells at four o'clock.
We'll be out there with you and come on down here and we'll get it. If you want to bring the proclamation to, we can hold it up.
She can take a picture too, Joan.
Okay.
You have your phone set?
Oh.
Colleen, I'm so tired.
That's right, thank you. Just a little bit more. Ready? One, two, three. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see you at four o'clock.
Okay, we'll be there.
And contrary to popular belief, the Liberty Bill did not break when we won the Super Bowl. As that was, that's one of the memes that they show.
Okay, moving on. Colleen Coon Grants? Looks like we have one.
I have a few items.
Oh, a few items, okay.
Okay, so first up, we received a grant contract for the Sexual Assault Kit Initiative Program. We were awarded $288,366. There's a resolution that goes with that that reads, "The Montague County Commission met on Wednesday, September 17, 2025 with a quorum present and passed the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Montague County Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Jeffrey L. Arnett, President of the Montague County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into a contractual agreement with the Division of Administrative Services, Justice and Community Services Section to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to provisions of the Sexual Assault Kit Initiative Grant Program." So in addition to the grant contract, you will also need to sign the standard conditions and assurances, the federal standard conditions and assurances, certification form regarding equal employment opportunity plan requirements, certifications regarding lobbying, and disclosure of lobbying activities.
Okay. I know we have some reimbursements, but I would like to approve this separately. So I move to approve the grant for the Sexual Assault Kit Initiative for fiscal year '26.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now I have requests for reimbursements. The first one is the Community Corrections Grant in the amount of $20,145.87. The Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $1,531.76. Governor's Highway Safety Program, Safe Communities, in the amount of $545.79. Click It or Ticket, $195.06. Impaired Driving, $951.59. And the Voca Grant in the amount of $8,266.65.
I move to approve the request for reimbursement as presented.
Second.
First and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to correspondence. Looks like we have a couple. Check received from the West Virginia First Qualified Settlement Fund.
Yeah, the annual check for, from the First Foundation.
Okay.
Was $174,363.93.
Great. And then letter of thanks received from the American Legion Mountaineer Boy State.
You all provided them with some funding.
Right.
For some scholarships for some boys to go down to, for the program. They sent you a nice thank you letter and a picture. It was really nice.
Great. Anything else?
We also have an invitation to the Monongahela Conservation District Fall Awards Banquet. It will be October the 15th at 6:00 p.m. This will be actually at Brewster Mills. And I had Colleen put it on your calendars. But there is an RSVP, so if you want to go, let us know. We'll RSVP for you.
Okay.
Also, a letter of support provided to the WVU School of Medicine's application to the First Foundation for Brief Strategic Family Therapy. This is an application that they submitted last year and they requested, and they weren't successful, but they requested a letter of support for you all to approve.
And again, that was already proven, I mean, it was already signed and sent on?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Based on the prior authority we've.
Correct, yeah. Because that's why it's raised under correspondence, okay.
Right, perfect. All right, any correspondence from you, Sean?
No.
Tom?
No.
Moving on, no unfinished business, new business. Consideration to send letters to Governor Patrick Morsey and the Public Service Commission of West Virginia expressing the county commission's opposition to the Mid-Atlantic Resiliency Link Marl Project being proposed by Next Era Energy Transmission Mid-Atlantic, Inc.
I move that we approve the letters as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Reports from elected officials and department heads, nothing from Granville today. Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yeah, basically a fantastic weekend. We opened up the Ice Arena Friday night and it was christened by the WVU beaten Pitt 6-5. And it's supposed to hold 1,000 and possibly 250 standing room only, and the rumor was it was over that. That's all I'm going to say. But that's very exciting that, you know, we had that, then we had an amazing game. And I really want to thank the students for staying the whole time because I know they had to go back and study, but they did stay for the game. And just the crowd behavior. I just think it was just first class and I'm just very excited that we were able to show Montague County in a very positive light. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I was told that we lost that game.
No, we won 6-5.
Okay, then.
I better post it.
Yeah, I was like, oh, well, the person says Pitt's really good. And I, maybe I just assumed that we lost, but anyhow. Well, that's good. It's better news then. Since our last meeting, last Thursday, we had MAP Executive Committee meeting and then I did a site visit to the Western End to discuss Need It Right Away for our broadband project. And I believe that the meeting was very successful. We met with consultants of Comcast and a number of local citizens that once explained what we were doing. It really wasn't a right-of-way issue, but they were happy to get an explanation as to what people were doing, you know, nosing around their power poles in that area. So it was a very productive meeting. Also had the Red Team meeting and Development Authority meeting on Thursday. Friday, we had staff reports. We had our DOH Exit 155 tag-up and then had our Comcast broadband projects update. Monday, we had a few interviews and the administrator and I met with a possible new vendor. Tuesday, we had our Juma call. Today's a regular day, though we do have three work sessions. Work sessions are picking up. I have my MAP board meeting and then I have a special event that I'll be attending later on tonight. Tomorrow, we have Mylan Park Foundation Executive Board meeting and WV Town and Gown Event, which I think, Tom, you're going to that, right?
Yes. I don't think I can.
I forget why, I think I have a hearing.
I know, I think at least, Commissioner, yeah, that's right, you had a hearing.
I have a hearing.
So we'll be representing the commission at that event. Friday, we have staff reports, meeting with a contractor, and then broadband team tag-up. As Commissioner, Commissioner Bloom went through his whole thing and didn't even mention the Pitt game.
Yeah.
So.
He did change his after the pledge. He said, "We beat Pitt," and said, "Beat Pitt."
Yes, so that was.
And that's going to last, what, four years?
Yeah, that was very exciting and we were very happy for Coach Rodriguez because that was a Pitt, Pitt is a very formidable opponent and our players played their butts off. And I don't really think we had very many incidents, couches burning. I'm sure there are isolated incidents somewhere, but for the most part, it was fairly quiet. I did want to talk about a couple events that happened last week. Obviously, on Wednesday, we failed to mention the 24th anniversary of the 9/11, of 9/11, and I didn't want, I wanted to make sure the commission at least acknowledged that. And another thing that people really probably don't want to talk about is after our meeting last Wednesday, as I'm getting home and preparing dinner, I learned that Charlie Kirk was assassinated, which we're living in pretty interesting times. You know, there's been three assassination attempts within the last two years, one of them successful. And right on the eve of the 24th anniversary of 9/11. And it struck me that, you know, whether it's with bullets or planes, both events were attacks on our freedom. The people that drove those planes in those buildings weren't attacking the people in those buildings. They were attacking the ideal of freedom. The person that shot Charlie was attacking the ideal of freedom. We have to get away from the fact that it was just a person, it was a person, it was a person with a, you know, that won't be coming home anymore to two children and a wife. We've become so divided in this country that something like that can happen and half the population just shrugs it off, is like, oh, well, you know, and sees it as a win because a loud voice for the other side is now silenced. And we have to get away from that. We have to get away from treating people that are trying to spread their views, truth, with, well, they got to be taken out. Charlie had a, it was very interesting listening to his podcast all the time. And he had a thing where he had these events and he brought all the people that disagreed with him to the front. It's like, if you disagree with me, come to the front of the line. And he, people, sometimes, I mean, just because it offends people doesn't mean it's not true sometimes. And again, it's just a, it's a conversation. It's participating in the, that's what this country is built on. We just approved the proclamation for the Constitution Week. And that's what this country is built on, is having conversations, civil conversations, and not be offended by words. Somewhere, we started trading lead for words and words for lead. And I, you know, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't point that out and really try to get back to just having conversations and not being about one side, one side versus the other. So anyhow, that's all I have to say.
Well said. Thank you for that, Sean. I had a few board meetings over the last week and then we interviewed a candidate for position and gave them a little tour of the county. And during that process, I was at our, over near our K9 Adoption Center and our maintenance and where we have our old vehicles, and I ran into Granville's police dog Cadillac, who was doing some training, and also our county dog Rocky, who had done his training. Now, Rocky's not quite as people-friendly as Cadillac, apparently. Rocky's the one they send when they want to get somebody out of somewhere that doesn't want to get out. So he's not as people-friendly. But it was pretty neat to see those animals in action. And I thank them for their service, as well as the officers that train and keep them as their own in the evening. So that was pretty neat to see. And as Sean mentioned, the city, it was pretty wild after the Pitt game. I picked my son up after the game and we decided to drive through town just to see what it looked like. And it was very peaceful, but it was like Mardi Gras. It was, there were people in the streets. It was difficult to drive down the street. But from what I understand, everything went off pretty well celebratory.
Yes.
And there weren't, I'm sure if I look at the rolls of the arrests, there were probably more than I'm mentioning, but it was, for the most part, it wasn't a headline the next day. So not that we would see it the next day in our paper, but the day after the next day. But anyway, that was for events. Anyway, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Anyway, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.